Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, October 5th, 2022, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street. For the record, I am Mayor Shelby Ronstadt presiding. Also present are Councillors Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, Andy Grobt, Jason Welker, and Justin Dick. Councillor Kate McAllister is absent. She's not participating remotely, is that true? Okay. We will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started this evening, there's a number of announcements and updates. But first, I would like to recognize Dr. Becky Meyer. Would you like to come to the podium and say a few words?
I just would like to publicly thank the city, all of you, for the chief and everything we worked together on Monday. I'm sure everyone has heard by now and seen in the paper, but we had a great, it was a great learning opportunity. There was a couple of mistakes we made. I knew we were learning as we were going, but I think that we have a very strong protocol. And we thought that everyone's happy, everyone's safe, happy that we had the collaboration together. We got to the bottom of it and just feel very confident moving forward that we have a strong working relationship. So I wanted to thank you all and publicly thank the chief and our SROs. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Doctor. Appreciate that. Next, I would like to announce, make an announcement in response to a citizen concern that was brought up at our last council meeting and has been brought up numerous times before over the last couple of years. The city has been criticized for eliminating the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee a couple of years ago in favor of having professional staff onboard to address ADA and multimodal issues throughout the city. And the speaker who was here a couple of weeks ago actually, I think, made the case of why it was really important for the city to move in this new direction. And that is because in her comments, the comment was made that the city's new sidewalk that was funded through grant funding on Pine Street did not have adequate crossings at the crosswalks. And had the bicycle pedestrian advisory, the Citizen Committee been in effect that they would have made sure that there were adequate, that there were more crossings on that sidewalk on Pine Street. Afterwards, I had a conversation with our professional staff on that very issue, and it was brought to my awareness that of certainly the staff was very thoughtful about where those crossings would occur and that it's actually not in best practice to have curb cuts that are emptying pedestrians out into the street when there are not receiving curb cuts on the opposite side. Because it actually puts someone who has a visibility disability, that puts them out into the street without any, without any appropriate exit. And so it creates a very dangerous situation. So that I think really illustrated the point of why it's important to have professional trained staff look at these things who are not only aware of the issues important to, to all users of our facilities, but understand best practices in the industry. And I want to recognize, I'd actually like to have Christine Coleman come forward and talk a little bit about this. And, and I want to give you a little bit of background about Christine. She's been with the city now for a couple of years. And she's our ADA coordinator as well as our fire marshal and has a variety of roles here at the city, building inspector. And I want to make the public aware that when an entity has 50 or more employees, it's required to designate at least one responsible employee to coordinate ADA compliance. The ADA coordinator is responsible for coordinating the efforts of the government entity to comply with Title II and investigate any complaints. ADA compliance is an identified strategic priority that's identified in the city's strategic plan and it's adopted by council. On November 17, 2001, the city council formally designated Christine Coleman as our ADA coordinator. Her responsibility in this role goes beyond traditional, the traditional definition of coordinating. She has more professional expertise, knowledge, and knowledge regarding accessibility than any other past or present employee of the city. Christine is a certified access specialist. This means she has been educated, tested, and certified to understand not only what requirements apply, but also the whys behind those requirements. In addition, she possesses the Accessibility Inspector and Plans Examiner certification from the International Code Council. This means that she's nationally recognized to understand the technical application of codes and standards. Her knowledge and passion for accessibility goes beyond technical certifications and is further supported by the fact that Christine has over 25 years serving as a mobility instructor for people with visual impairments. She understands real world access issues and how to solve these challenges in a meaningful, thoughtful, and compliant manner. So with that, Christine, if you'd like to comment on your perspective, I guess, and if you can just kind of briefly tell us about your review of the Pine Street sidewalk project and, and how that, the outcome came to be.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With your permission, I'd also like to invite Amanda Wilson up.
Please, thank you. Yeah, Amanda Wilson, of course, is the Infrastructure Development Services Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Christine. Just a brief introduction regarding our capital projects and when we engage Christine for her input. Previously, the comment regarding engineers being involved is accurate. We do engage design professionals that are licensed in the state of Idaho to assist us in designing all of our capital improvement projects. However, beginning in 2019, when we hired Christine and having her technical expertise at the table, she became involved in our capital improvement projects at the stage of design review. So as we're going about designing a project, Christine is engaged in all of our projects, not just Pine Street. And then as we progress that project forward, she continues to provide input to staff anytime we go to make a change. There's always site conditions that change in the field. We don't make a design change, meaning an engineer solely isn't making that change without consulting with Christine. And then further, as we move forward through the inspection process, she's intimately by her process as well. So just wanted to give you a little bit of background about when and why she's involved, and I'll let her speak directly to the Pine Street project.
Thank you, Amanda. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Specifically for the Pine Street project, I did walk all of Pine Street with the engineer and project manager. It was more than a full day of work, walking and determining where safe crossings belonged. Not easy because some of the cross streets are offset. That makes for mid-block crossings. And actually, we're not, a mid-block crossing isn't appropriate unless it's a designated and marked crosswalk. So it was really challenging. So I just want to emphasize that no decisions were made based on what was existing or what was popular in a block. Decisions were made based on safety and best practices. We refer to the Department of Justice and Department of Transportation Technical Assistance, the ADA Technical Guide, and PROAG, which is the Public Right-of-Way, Public Rights-of-Way Accessibility Guidelines. So so the places where, I walked it today to refresh my memory, to remember like, why did we make decisions here and there? There are curb ramps with detectable warnings at all appropriate places, and we even did leave a mid-block crossing right across from Pine Street Park from here. There, because Ella is offset. So there were two mid-block crossings, one where Ella comes from the north and one where Ella comes up the side of the park. And we eliminated the one crossing from Ella heading north across Pine Street because unanimously, we determined that it was a terribly unsafe place to cross because westbound traffic on Pine not only couldn't see pedestrians because there's a lot of parked cars in that neighborhood area right there. So you're all the way out into the vehicular way before anyone even sees you because the crosswalk's not marked there. So that one was absolutely not safe enough to replace, but we did leave the one that crosses to where Ella goes north after Pine Street because that is a very safe place to cross, great visibility. There should be a crosswalk there, but we felt like that was a safe and appropriate place to leave a crossing. That's just an example. I did point out after the comments at the previous meeting that it's, as the mayor mentioned, it's horribly unsafe for a visually impaired traveler or a mobility impaired traveler to be provided with a ramp that enters a vehicular way where there's not a safe receiving ramp or receiving pedestrian way. So you can picture that if a person doing maybe long cane travel enters the street expecting a receiving ramp and they don't find one, they're just going to search left and right, back and forth, be thinking they misaligned the crossing and looking for that ramp. And by the time that they don't find it, then it's really difficult to reorient. It's a very dangerous situation. Like the, the, the reverse crossing isn't safe at all. So same thing can happen with someone who's mobility challenged, who's in a wheelchair or using a walker, who gets out in the street expecting there to be a receiving ramp or sidewalk and not finding one, then they're forced to be in the vehicular way. So just wanted to assure you that we do put a lot of thought and our best effort into making sure that we put curb ramps where they belong and where they're safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Appreciate that. So I, I thought that was important to bring attention to because I have heard that criticism numerous times over the last couple of years from a couple of citizens here. And I want the council and the public to understand that that was a very thoughtful choice. And we're much better served, while I very much appreciate all the public input and citizen involvement in these projects and input on, you know, design and considerations, it's very valuable. At the end of the day, you know, we rely heavily on professional staff to make the ultimate decision about what's in the best interests of the public. So I'm confident that the city's moving in the right direction there, and I hope the public can take that to heart and mind. The next thing that I would like to call attention to is one that's kind of near and dear to my heart. We've, so on Saturday, this Saturday, October 8th, at 10:00 AM is a ribbon cutting for the new cross-country trail called the Lower Basin Cross Country Multi-Use Trail up in the Little Sand Creek watershed. And I will be there. I know a number of people from staff will be there. I know councillor, councillor Welker will be there, I'm certain. And probably councillor, councillor woman Rule, hopefully we'll see, but I, I think, and I hope you all are invited, and I hope that you can make it. It's up at the Fourth Switchback, 10:00 AM this Saturday. And this is a really big deal because it marks, for me, a work that has been in process since I've been involved here at the city. I came on city council in, in 2012. And I discovered really soon after, I had no idea that the city owned nearly 5,000 acres up there in the Little Sand Creek watershed that is the source of our drinking water. And it's, it's an amazing resource that we have up there. And wouldn't it be fantastic, I thought, if we actually could, you know, encourage and invite the public to go hike and go bike and, and use appropriate scaled, appropriate impact recreation to be able to really enjoy the public's investment up there that we've spent the last, over 100 years, the city of Sandpoint has had the foresight to invest in, in purchasing that, those wildlands up there. Initially, and solely for the purpose of watershed for water protection. But what changed in 2012 is we now have the Lakeview Plant down at, at the lake, down at the trailhead of the Ponderay Bay Trail. And that lake plant provides half of the water for the city, half of our potable water, and will allow for future growth well into the future. And, and that's, so that's kind of a game changer. So it really allowed the city to be able to think differently about how we use the watershed up there. And certainly, when we look around the country, we see more and more cities, municipalities, counties that are finding creative uses of their watershed and allowing appropriate use, appropriate recreational use up there to really maximize the use, maximize the potential for those public investments to serve the public. So starting in 2012, I launched an effort to include an appropriate amount of recreational use up there in the watershed. And that started with the concept of the Watershed Crest Trail. And it was funny because Maeve, earlier this morning, who's Maeve's been here for a couple of years now, and she was talking about how, how impressive it was that, you know, that she, she brought this, you know, most communities that she's worked in, she, the community worked for years and years to get a project like this off the ground, and here she shows up and it just happens, just, just like that. And I laughed because from my perspective, this has been at least 10 years in the making. But the thing is, as soon as Maeve showed up, and as soon as Jason joined the head of Ponderay Peddlers, it did happen just like that. So this has been a long time coming. This has been a dream for my, of mine. And while this is simply the tip of the iceberg, what this marks is the beginning of a new vision for the Little Sand Creek watershed. And it's one in which that is an incredible asset, incredible resource for us to be able to, to go up there with our families, with our friends, and enjoy the beautiful wilderness that we have up there. And, and this marks the beginning of many great things to come. Maeve is going to share with us a little bit about what's coming up in the next week. There's this ribbon cutting that happens on Saturday is just the beginning. There's going to be a couple of events coming up next week that will be the beginning of the, what I will say, robust planning effort to develop a really Class A recreation facility up there in the Little Sand Creek watershed. So Maeve, would you like to say a few words, please?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that I will be there. My boys' cross-country meet does not start till 11:15, so hopefully I can watch the ribbon get cut and make it to the lead in that timeframe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and everyone on council. Yes, there is the ribbon cutting on Saturday, which we're really excited about. And why I particularly am excited is because we now have the first of its kind in the area, emergency response system. And Jason's worked tirelessly to get this system in. And that system means that at every intersection, there is now a code and it has a number, and it's associated with a GIS coordinate that relates to the emergency response system and that all the responders have that map. And so that would mean that if you get injured, you just call 911 and you let them know what number sign you just passed, and they can find you quickly. So that, that is the first step of implementing the risk and the safety. And I'm so excited that everyone has embraced this in full charge ahead with POP and with councillor Welker and his efforts with POP or the Ponderay Peddlers. Okay, so that's the ribbon cutting. That's sort of the kickoff to the planning week that we're having next week. Next week is the recreation planning efforts with the professional consultants. And we have a consultant coming to town who's been working with us for the last few months on getting the project started, and that is Betsy Bryan. She is with the National Park Service, Rivers, Trails, and Conservation Association. And we're going to have a public meeting on Tuesday night, right here, 5:30 PM. There's going to be two presentations, and each presentation will be followed by an opportunity for question and answer. And that's again, Tuesday night here at City Hall Chambers. And the first one is at 5:30. The second meeting will be at 6:30. So if you can come earlier or later, it doesn't matter. We'll be here for a few hours. And that's where you can find out all the general information about the project, as well as provide any ideas you have, feedback, questions, all of that. And then the following night, on Wednesday, October 12th, at 5:30 PM, there's going to be a more specific trails-focused meeting. And that's going to be co-hosted with the Ponderay Peddlers, the Nordic Club, and KniXu Land Trust. And that's where we'll be bringing in our consultant from the International Mountain Bike Association, otherwise known as IMBA. And we will be working together with the trail people who already know about trails that are out there or have visions for future trails, such as the Watershed Crest Trail. And that information's going to feed into a subset of this recreation plan, which will be the trails plan. And then throughout all next week, we're going to be working with various special interest groups, the stakeholders and the property owners, and having focus group meetings and tours. So again, those two meetings, Tuesday night, 5:30 PM here, and then Wednesday at 5:30 PM at the Matchwood Brewing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maeve. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, may I add one thing?
Please.
As the Director of Ponderay Peddlers, I just want to send out a huge thanks to all the volunteers and the members that helped this happen. We've kind of built this trail somewhat on a shoestring. And when I wrote the grant application two years ago for this trail project, I ambitiously promised 200 hours of volunteer labor towards this trail, which if you think about it, one volunteer for one hour counts for one two-hundredth of that. So we, we had thought we could maybe reach 200 hours, and that's could be put towards the match for the grant. Well, when it was all said and done, volunteers contributed over 700 hours, over 20 trail work parties, over 16 months to get this trail done. So it's been a really fun project, and I'm really glad it's done. And I'm excited to share with the community this Saturday.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that. And thank you to all those who contributed. What a gift to the community. So I have a proclamation to read. So this month, October, is Safe Infant Sleep Awareness Month. Whereas sudden unexpected infant death is the sudden and unexpected death of an infant birth to age one, in which the manner and cause of death are not immediately obvious prior to investigation. And whereas sudden infant death syndrome is a subset of SWEED, sudden unexpected infant death, and remains the number one cause of infant death between the age of 28 days of life to one year. And whereas the tragedy of SWEED can happen to any family regardless of race, ethnicity, or economic group. And whereas evidence-based research has proven that when babies are placed in a crib, in a crib alone, in their, in the parent's room, on their backs, on a firm crib mattress with a fitted crib sheet, using no-crib bumper pads, pillows, blankets, quilts, or stuffed animals and toys in a smoke-free environment, they will sleep safest and reduce the risk of SIDS and prevent any other infant sleep-related deaths. And whereas Northwest Infant Survival and SIDS Alliance is a nationwide not-for-profit organization dedicated to providing infant safe sleep education, bereavement support services, and creating community awareness around preventing sleep-related infant deaths. And whereas during the month of October, Northwest Infant Survival and SIDS Alliance will hold special events, including Rum for the Angels on Saturday, October 8th, distribute safe infant sleep educational pamphlets, cribs, and wearable blankets to, to families in need. Therefore, providing the best opportunity for all babies in Sandpoint to survive and thrive. Therefore, I, Shelby Ronstadt, Mayor of City of Sandpoint, Idaho, do hereby proclaim 2022 as Safe Infant Sleep Awareness Month in Sandpoint, Idaho, in order to raise awareness about preventing sleep-related infant deaths and to encourage infant safe sleep practices so that no parent will have to endure the tragedy of the death of a baby. And I believe, is Liz Montgomery here? Great. I would love to present this to you, if you want to step forward. If you'd like to say a few words.
Good evening. My name is Liz Montgomery. I'm joined tonight by a few of my family members. And along with Bonner County Coroner Robert Beers is here tonight. And my mom Barb, my sister-in-law Adria, and my nieces Delaney and Lillian. So thank you very much. I'm the Executive Director of Northwest Infant Survival and SIDS Alliance. We're headquartered out of Coeur d'Alene, but we do a lot of work in this area. And when it comes to bereavement services and safe infant sleep, we host Sandpoint Safety Day with combination with Bonner General up here every year and do car seat checks and safe sleep awareness. And so we are the only nonprofit doing this work here in Idaho. And so we just wanted to bring awareness to this, number one cause of death of our babies is unsafe sleep. And 19 years ago, my son Mason, he died at five and a half months from putting, he was put to sleep on a couch covered in a heavy blanket. And in 2003, we didn't know, right? Like we had no idea. We just knew back to sleep. And so we've dedicated our lives to, to this work, and we provide cribs and sleep socks to the hospital here, your Pregnancy Crisis Center here. And we're partners with Salt Creek Fire with our car seat program. So I just appreciate your time tonight and for listening to me and presenting this and signing this and being aware of this. And so keeping safe infant sleep in mind when you're, you know, making decisions for childcare centers and in-home care providers. So I just wanted to thank you on behalf of myself, my Board of Directors, and of course, the families that we serve. So, thank you.
Yes, appreciate that. Okay, are there any announcements from council?
I just wanted to recognize the Bonner General Health Foundation pulled off its first annual Find Your Strength 1K and 5K on September 24th. It was an amazing success. We had, we started and finished at City Beach. We had over 200 participants. Over 400 community members joined us at the after-race party. We brought in over $30,000 for a piece of technology or a technological, I would say exoskeleton for the foundation as a good start. But I want to kind of touch on what councillor Welker said, and what makes this community so special is we had an abundance of volunteers show up that day. Okay, we were planning on 40 volunteers, and I think we got closer to 70. We had over four different service clubs were represented, many different community members, many different nonprofit members in all walks of life as well. And I just want to highlight how unique this community is to get that kind of people out on a first-year event. And I think it really touches with what Jason said as well, with the 700 hours that they put in to make this trail a reality as well, too. We are very blessed to be in such a community, and a win for Bonner General is a win for the city and this community as well. So thank you.
All right, staff, announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have several, and we're going to run through them quickly tonight so we can get to the snow workshop. So first, Chief Gilchrist, it is Fire Prevention Week, and we have an open house after a couple of years of not having one.
Yes, ma'am. How's everybody doing tonight?
Great.
Just down and dirty this Saturday. From 10 to 1, we'll have our open house. We haven't had one since 2019 because of the two year of the asterix, is what I like to refer to them as. So it's just basically, it's going to kick off National Fire Prevention Week, which is the 9th through the 15th of October. We'll have a lot of activities highlighting and showcasing our fire safety mindset, as well, games, station tour, some static displays of trucks and equipment demonstrations. And if you're, if you're just happening to get by there, we have hot dogs, too. That's always the big draw right there. Can't go wrong, hot dog, right? But that's, that's it. I just wanted to kind of let everybody know that was going on this weekend.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Great. Our next announcements and community participation opportunity input, important opportunity, Amy. Our city planner, Amy Tweaton's going to give us a little short update on comp plan and upcoming opportunities.
I will try to be short, just to update you on the progress on the comprehensive plan. The commission has been reviewing draft chapters based on master plans that The Commission has been reviewing draft chapters based on master plans that have been completed. Again, there has been so much good planning in Parks and Recreation and multimodal and pulling that into moving forward with comprehensive plan. Last night, the Commission reviewed the results. We did a survey to just reaffirm the vision statements that were created based on early engagement. But because there was that pause in the planning process, we thought we should go back out. Just reaffirm that what had been done previously was still the vision of the community. And we did have overwhelming, I would, for most of the questions, it was over seventy percent agreed with the statements that had been created. So our next, I know council is looking forward to having additional engagement. Our next opportunity, the Commission just discussed last night, we will be doing a public workshop on housing in neighborhoods. Obviously, we know housing is a critical issue and that when it's in someone's neighborhood, it becomes very personal. So what we really want to achieve through this workshop, and it's going to be two days, it'll be October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, and it will run, most of the day will probably start about one in the afternoon and it'll go six at night. So people have plenty of opportunity, is really to find out what people do want, not once it's happening and what they don't want. So it will be both educational in terms of what is zoning currently allow, what do we allow? And then asking questions on preference for if we're looking at ADUs, what do those look like? What do townhouses look like? What do duplexes look like? So a lot of interactive, not so much a presentation, but interactive opportunities for people to give feedback. And then the Commission will keep working with that information and additional drafting chapters. And then we hope mid to late November to do another workshop on land use and growth, because that's the next. Once we know what our land uses are, where are we putting them? How is our future land use map going to change if it's going to change? So those will be upcoming. I don't have a date for that yet, but October twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh is the next opportunity. And yes, that will be located here in Council Chambers. And again, it'll be almost two full days and we will start getting the word out. Again, it was just said last night, those would be the dates. So we will try to get the word out as much as possible for those.
Amy, I suspect there will be questions on this. Is that going to be open house style?
Yes.
People can just drop in when they're available. They don't have to stay for the full day or for two days.
Correct. It is open house drop-in, come when you can, and there will be staff here. I've asked planning commissioners to maybe drop in and just provide some input as well.
Great. Thank you. Any questions about that? Okay, thank you, Amy. Appreciate it.
And our last update tonight, in fall of two thousand and seventeen, we had launched a financial transparency portal on our website where citizens could get information about our finances, how we're spending dollars in accordance with the budget, all the way down to the line. You'll recall from the budget process that we said we were updating this portal. We went to a new platform and Sarah's going to give you a quick overview of where to find that. It was launched today. So we are on the new portal for finances affected today.
All right. So the old portal was on this finance tab here. So it's under the same tab. And it is it is the same data. It's just a little bit of a different structure. You can drill down. You can get to what you want by drilling and picking the different funds on different service areas here. If you, one thing that's a feature that I wanted to show is the, if you can actually personalize this experience to yours personal liking. So I'm going to put in here a home value of three hundred thousand. And what this does is it will allow the user to show, just scroll down here. The public safety, what their contribution is, is two hundred and forty-eight dollars of their taxes goes to public safety. So and I'm not going to scroll all the way through this, but you can kind of, it has a lot more interactive features to it. So it seems from what we have used so far and looked at, it's very user-friendly and it, it's different, but it has the same data in there. If you have any questions, let me know. We will, there are other tabs that we will be launching in the next several weeks, months that I'm sure we'll get updates on to.
Great. Thank you, Sarah.
Yes.
That it?
Yep.
Okay, great. Moving on already. So next on the agenda is a council workshop on the snow removal plan. For those participating on Zoom, the meeting audio will be paused momentarily while we set up for the workshop. Then we'll, we'll be underway. Council members, if you'd like to please join staff down at the conference table at the other end of the room. We're now ready to begin the workshop and we all get settled, Amanda Wilson will lead us off.
Welcome to our workshop around snow removal. I hope you all noticed the prop sitting outside. Oh, wow, that's much louder. Thank you to our streets crew for bringing the snowplow in October. I realize we don't have snow, so that's a little odd. The purpose of bringing the prop was really to help everyone get a visual for gates. So many people don't know what we mean by the word gates. So if you are interested, we'll pop outside after this and are happy to give you a little bit of a tour of our greater with the gate on it. That said, how could we have a workshop without an icebreaker? Pun intended. So just to keep it fun, two truths and a lie, I'll ask for council's feedback on which one of these is incorrect. So Aristotle believes that birds spent the winter in hibernation at the bottom of the sea. That's one. The largest snowball fight ever on record of seven thousand six hundred and eighty-one participants occurred in Idaho. And last but not least, snowflakes are made of water molecules bonded together and they usually, but not always, have six sides. So council, which one of those is not true? Any others?
I hear it's weird.
So, Mr. Welker, you are correct. The largest snowball fight ever on record actually occurred in Canada. So it is true that Aristotle thought that birds hibernated at the bottom of the sea.
Why did he believe that? It's philosophy.
That is a different workshop, sir. So that said, also wanted to show you a picture of all the different types of snowflakes. When our crews say, well, it depends on the type of snow, they really mean it. There is science behind the fact that there are all different kinds of snowflakes. So all joking aside now, we'll talk about the workshop. The purpose and format, this is just a highlight of the next fifty minutes. So I did want to note to everyone that we will be reconvening at seven PM. So we have about fifty minutes to have this conversation. So to break that into three parts, we'll give about ten minutes of background. We will have about ten minutes of an overview of the preliminary citizen survey results. And then we'll spend the bulk of the time, the thirty minutes, really having that facilitated discussion on opportunities for improvements. So again, workshop format and purpose, just for clarity, this is a discussion only. The purpose is for staff to share information and some initial suggestions. And then we're asking council to give us feedback to help guide on any potential future changes. No decision or formal action tonight, and we're not taking public comment at this time. It's, we will be discussing the public comment that came via survey. However, the opportunity for public comment would be if we were to elect to move forward with any policy updates. We'll bring that forward to City Council on October nineteenth. And at that time, we'll take public comment and potentially adopt by resolution any changes. So that is the process. Brief background, prior to two thousand and eighteen, which is when our last policy was adopted. Just a couple highlights. I won't read all of the slides. I'll let you kind of take a look at those. But one of the big changes that we made after two thousand and eighteen was at that time, we were mobilizing crews to serve the streets when we had about two to four inches of snowfall. We also had different categories than we currently do of our streets. And we gated in front of driveways and vehicles. And the challenge at that time around those actions were narrowing our streets and creating more burms within the street. And then we also, at that point, did a rotation on odd and even side for parking, which was causing some confusion. So with that said, the two thousand and eighteen Policy and Operations Plan really focused on providing a proactive response. That was fundamentally what we were trying to improve upon is how can we be more proactive? We also purchased some new equipment. We changed some position types. And then we really optimized our interdepartmental roles and responsibilities. We did a lot of homework and research. What are other cities dealing with our other communities so that we could do lessons learned from that effort? This is just a highlight of some of the communities we look to for their policies. How are other jurisdictions handling the same challenges that we have? And we did note that snow removal is considered an emergency. It is an operation that, because it largely supports our ability to provide emergency services to residents, we have an obligation to provide a reasonable effort of response. So two thousand and eighteen, we had a very healthy conversation about on-street parking. What were all the different options that other jurisdictions were using to try and communicate most effectively with their citizens? The most common policy at that time in two thousand and eighteen that we found in our research was that no parking during the season was the most common. However, that's not the policy we adopted. As you're aware, we have the current policy, the blue at the bottom, that it's only on one side. And that is the even side right now, is what our adopted policy provides for. A couple additional changes that we included in the two thousand and eighteen plan provided for twelve-hour maximum work shifts. So previously, our crews would start all of them at two AM and they would work continuously until all of the streets were plowed. So the staggered shifts and on-call policy to adjust that so that we could respond to a more continuous proactive basis for snow response was the focus. We added things like a communications hotline. We also had additional coverage when it came to our pathways and shifted some responsibilities in that regard as well. We developed our city's very first operations plan regarding snow and ice control. This focused on a comprehensive list of our resources, training priorities, and really communicating to our crews this idea of continuous improvement, which is why we're here, so that we can continue to have that conversation. So what's happened since two thousand and eighteen? We haven't been at City Council and had a broader community conversation, but it doesn't mean that we haven't made changes yet since two thousand and eighteen. So a list of a few of these, and I am going to talk a little bit fast here so that we could try and get through the slides. We've added several streets as kind of a pilot project in response to, I would say primarily our emergency services feedback. So our police officers, our fire crews, citizens, our own monitoring saying, hey, that map that was adopted is fantastic, great, but there's a few locations we need to put at a higher priority level than what we originally adopted in eighteen. So for the last year, so last season, we added Church Street, Lincoln Street, and Ontario Street, as well as Ella, to the priority ones. So the priority structure was priority ones mean you do that first, then you move on to twos and threes, as the numbering system implies, recognizing that we can't be everywhere at once. The enhanced pre-treatment operations, so from an operational perspective, we had a lot of conversations with our team around the frequency of us pre-treating those priority one streets and what conditions warrant that. We certified key personnel on a national pre-treatment method so that this isn't just based upon what we think makes sense. It's, here's some best practices and standards. We also sent key personnel, attended a national three-day snow conference. And that was all day for three days, a variety of educational, professional continuing education credits for their improvement and continuous, the idea of continuous improvement, supporting that from an education perspective. We also implemented a night shift. The night shift really helped to improve from just an on-call to provide that twenty-four-seven coverage, but that we have staff that are scheduled for majority of a twenty-four-hour period. It's actually about twenty hours total. And then depending on a snow event, they can work their full twelve hours providing. So two crews, twelve hours each, gives us our twenty-four-hour coverage. And we've had times where that is just a typical forty-hour work week and other times where they might be working that twenty-four-hour day, a whole crew for many, many days at a time. So. A few other changes since two thousand and eighteen. We have six certified roadmasters. That's a statewide education program. Much of that is related to snow removal. We've enhanced our monitoring and verification. We actually have a GPS system that our crew and myself use to verify what streets have and haven't been completed. So at the end of a shift, we review that and say, oops, looks like we forgot or missed or didn't spend, you know, didn't get our two passes down X and Y and Z street. And we have that continuous communication in that regard to ensure that we are providing coverage. We used to get a lot of calls saying, you never came by this street. And those calls have gone down significantly as a result of our ability to monitor that. Continuous career engagements and feedback, really trying to promote the open lines of communication. Not just our operators, when I say crew, but all of our staff that assists through the snowplow or through winter season. We adopted a pedestrian sidewalk priority map within our multimodal transportation plan. That's where we said, if we're going to focus on enforcement, where do we need to focus? And as a community, as well as council, decided that these are our arterials, if you will, within the sidewalk network, network, so that we can really focus on enforcement in those areas. We adopted a transportation plan that really came up with a longer-term resolution to some of our key issues that are based upon design challenges. So for example, when we have a curb and a sidewalk right against that curb and there's no buffer in that space, we have a really hard time maintaining the sidewalk as well as maintaining the street, right? You're both competing for that space. So recognizing we need to improve those streets from a design capacity to allow us to have better operations. We provided additional equipment. We've enhanced our ability to store and provide brine. We added an additional community resource officer since two thousand and eighteen. That helps with enforcement as well. And then we have some new fees, most recently adopted and going into effect this month to aid in some of that parking enforcement. Take a breath. So last but not least, did you know the city of Sandpoint, I know council knows this, but a lot of our members of the public or some of our public does not recognize that we only serve within city limits. So we don't serve Ponderay. A lot of people have addresses of Sandpoint, but doesn't mean you're in the city of Sandpoint limits. And many of those streets are actually maintained by other jurisdictions. We average fifty-eight inches of snowfall per year. And last season, so in between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, our total taxpayer dollars spent on removing and managing snow within streets, this includes labor and materials, trucking, all of those things was two hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Have a hundred and five lane miles. So that's about twenty-five hundred per mile, lane mile. And then just re-emphasizing that we recognize that winter management is really a shared responsibility between citizens, business owners, and staff. It's certainly not just staff that's contributing to our ability to move throughout our community in the winter months. Our citizens spend a lot of time, as everyone is aware, shoveling, working on their driveways. Business owners are out there at the crack of dawn trying to make sure things are ready for people. So it's truly a community effort. And then last but not least, it's not just our streets crew, for example, or our parks crew that handles and is impacted by winter. It really takes a whole team effort. And I really give kudos to especially our frontline staff that are doing their best to respond to all the questions and concerns that come into City Hall, as well as obviously our crews that are out there operating in our community resource officers and police officers. How are we on time, sir? Looks like we're good.
You're getting short because if you want our discussion for thirty minutes, you need to.
Okay. So primary, he's my
Two-point-oh speed.
Enforcer on time. So preliminary citizen survey results. We launched it on September twenty-eighth. It ends on October fifteenth. So as of yesterday in the morning, we had two hundred and twenty-six responses. Of those responses, seventy-five point three percent were within city limits for more than five years they've been here. So majority of our respondents have lived here a while, they're not brand-new residents that were participating in this survey primarily. Majority of them traveled by vehicle in the winter. Seven point one percent noted that they walk or use a wheelchair in the winter. And eighty percent were between the ages of sixteen and sixty-five. I'd also note, we asked several questions about how do you get your information as well as what do you know about our policies? And I would say our citizens are very well-informed. They majority had a very good understanding of what our rules were. And what their responsibilities were, such as moving a vehicle and the even side of the street. So overall, punchline, forty-seven point six percent were satisfied or very satisfied with our snow removal services overall. About forty-three percent to date have said that we need to make some improvements or maybe some changes to consider. And nine point three percent are not satisfied. All of that said, I found the following four interesting. So ninety-six percent satisfied with the conditions on our priority one. Almost ninety-four on our are satisfied with priority twos. Residential streets are coming in as we anticipated, a bit lower satisfaction. I think there's a variety of contributing factors to that. In part, it being a lower priority for our policy, it has a lower result there. And then eighty-five point seven percent were satisfied with the conditions of the public parking lots. This slide has a lot of information, I'm not gonna read it to you, but I'll give you just a moment to digest it.
That last one doesn't leave us any guidance, does it?
Well, that's a good point, mayor, I think if if you look at the thirty-six point five percent regarding our current use. As well as the thirty-one point five percent prefer us to follow the policy, I'll explain a little bit there. So our policy provides that in our operations plan, that after four inches of snow, gates are no longer effective. That is in part why there's a plow outside, so that you can see the size of gate and how much volume that gate can actually hold. So our policy says that. Our crews very, very much prefer to use the gates. They want to make sure those driveways are clear for our residents. And therefore, they push it, they go much farther past four inches when we have snow that exceeds that. Part of the reason beyond volume that we elected to have a policy about four inches is because it takes us a lot longer when we use gates. And so the idea was if we stop using gates in a heavy snowfall sooner, we can get to the rest of the streets sooner, right? If the priority is passable streets throughout town, then we need to be able to do that as efficiently as possible. One mechanism of being as efficient as possible is to stop using gates. Our crews are very uncomfortable with that, they they want to give the best service as possible. And so we'll push it six inches, we'll push it up to eight. And I will let everyone know, they always call before they stop using the gates. And it's me who's making that final decision if we're gonna stop using them, because that's how much they don't want to not use them. So when I take that into consideration, if you look at what I mean by thirty-six point five percent current use of gates, that's what we've been doing, right? Plus the follow the policy, the follow the policy people would be also in the same boat with the current use. So I guess my point there is, you know, sixty-seven, sixty-eight percent would, they understand why we have this gate policy. And thirty-two percent just want us to use them all the time, so.
But you're you're saying that like physically impossible to use them all the time? If we have a twelve-inch snowstorm, the gates will be completely defective?
Correct, because what happens is not only the volume, it's just like when you're shoveling your own sidewalk, right? And you have the shovel and the snow falls over the sides of the shovel when you just keep pushing instead of dumping your snow, right? It falls over the edges, it pulls over the top. And or the type of snow, because it it, when we get really wet snow and it chunks into balls, everyone's seen this, right? It too can't handle that as well. And so that's when people are obviously complaining that they have these chunks in their driveways. It's just, it's physically not possible. The four inches does come from a significant amount of the research that we did. Most communities have the four-inch policy, or actually majority don't use gates at all. So we we are lucky to have them, it's not normal.
So a question. You say that we can get the streets done faster, maybe this is a question for you. That's very ambiguous to me. Are we gaining five minutes? Are we gaining five hours? You know, how much time are we gaining? And I think that that's a really important question relative to the use of gate or the not use of gate. And when the amount of snow starts to edge up. And then just to speak to your principle of spill over. If there's still less snow for someone who has a difficult time clearing their driveway anyway with the gate, even if there's spillover, isn't that still better for our citizens? Than if we leave the hole in the snow in the berm for them? So those are two questions that maybe we can finish at the end when you're done.
Sounds good. Here are some additional results of the survey. And this is, this slide is really focused on around the pedestrian mobility side, our bus stops, our multi-use paths, our bike lanes. Non-vehicular. Any thoughts or comments before I move on?
I'd potentially guess that the fifty-four percent who are satisfied with the condition of bike lanes don't ride their bikes much in the winter.
Who does? Or they've got snow bikes.
Okay, opportunities for improvement, and we appear to be right on time. So we have about thirty minutes left for a facilitated conversation on opportunities about how to move forward.
Good question.
Yeah.
Do you have a best guess on what it would take in terms of budget to, if the city were to adopt a policy to also clear sidewalks?
I do not, but I can certainly try to come up with something before the October nineteenth, meaning if you would like.
I'd like to see that too.
When you say sidewalks, you mean all sidewalks in town?
Yeah, I mean, for starters, and then we could, you know, maybe option A and option B would look at priority routes. Or the, yeah, sidewalk priority routes. And would we even, I mean, I assume we'd have to upgrade our equipment, but would that just be a four-wheeler?
No, you can't really use a four-wheeler on a four to five-foot sidewalk.
What would you use?
You would walk with a snow blower, just like a resident.
Really?
Yep.
Solar roadways on the sidewalk.
I can estimate that budget, and it means one weekend of work. Okay, so opportunities for improvement, the fun part. I wanted to clarify, just putting some structure around the conversation a little bit. So our adopted policy is really intended to come to a consensus on our expectations. So council is tasked with coming to a consensus on what our expectations are. The operations plan is how we meet those expectations. Council has to make any approval changes, city council has to approve any changes to the policy. And it is division heads and administrative approval on our operations plan. However, this conversation is gonna discuss both of them. And I think it's a really healthy conversation to have on the how we get there. I just wanted to help kind of put those in two different buckets for the purpose of discussion. Speaking of areas for improvement. The crew insists I include this photo with every single.
Absolutely right.
It's like a nightmare.
And Andy does too.
I can't wait.
Grinding his teeth over there.
Trying to sleepwalk.
It's okay, don't want the photo, make everyone upset. Okay, so one slide on just some initial thoughts and opportunities for improvement. This is one of the, we are very close to the end of the presentation on the slides. This was intended to help facilitate a discussion. So top box is policy-related, bottom area is operations-related. So we have had many, many conversations internally, looking at the survey results based upon our, you know, experiences over the last four years since we adopted the policy. We've had many discussions with our crews, our police officers, our crews at all levels to come up with some initial thoughts on how to improve. One is we policy-related. From the aspect of improving our enforcement from a parking compliance perspective. Parking compliance at times can feel like cry wolf in the aspect of, we have a policy that says no parking on the odd side of the street from November first through March first. But we don't historically really enforce it as much in November. Because there's usually not much snow, and it really doesn't have such a huge impact on the operations. So it seems reasonable to push it to December first in our, this is again coming strictly from staff and why we're having this discussion, to the December first date.
Frankly, Amanda, why would it even need to be enforced if there's no snow?
From the sake of consistency, and I'll let maybe Chief speak to that.
I think it's a creating that pattern consistency and expectation. So when we say November, we enforce it, then we get laxadaisical as public and we don't deal with it. So we have, if we adopt this hard line of December first, one of the things that we've seen is that we, we, we can be more strict, right? And if we have that deadline of here it is, and this is the expectation from the city and the council and from our citizens, then we can go out and more strictly enforce those lines. And take, because by December, we're usually in the midst of snowing, so that takes away that gray area of us trying to say, well, there's no snow, do we really wanna force it? Versus by December, there shouldn't get into that that pattern, we're all about teaching patterns.
First, then, you know, we, it's November twentieth and we get a free eighteen-inch snowstorm and.
The policy still would be ineffective, I mean, when the snow, the city policy says when the snow flies. So we just wouldn't be writing citations.
I see.
Depending on the provision, how it's put into the writing.
Yeah, and these are bullet points, the depth of the policy change would obviously have more to it than that. Encouraged when the snow flies, but required December first.
Correct.
What you're saying, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Review priorities, I have another slide on that, so I'm gonna pause on priorities, that's really focused around kind of that comment I made of, we added some streets to our priority ones. We might need to make some changes on our pathways, we've had discussions with our parks crew that really takes the lead on those efforts. Third bullet there, residential, so our code actually, as well as our policy and our operations. You know, changing our residential streets from currently, we don't mobilize our residentials until we have a two-inch minimum. So instead of a two-inch minimum, changing it to it's plowable. I don't know if that's actually a word, but it is in this slide. So the street is, if you can plow the snow, then we should be out there plowing. That does not mean bare pavement, bare pavement is actually a standard by some. You'll notice ITD often puts a lot of chemicals on the road to help get bare pavement, that being their standard in some locations. So just being really clear that the residential increase is just enhancing the frequency as to when we're out there on the residential streets is what that third one's about.
And I have a comment on that, and I know, I think we discussed this last year about when we get a lot of snow, we're all plowed. Four days later, we get the weird January thaw, and it's now four or five inches of mush, and then it freezes at night, and then we've got all this chaos. And so where's our policy standing around that? Because we've not really actually had a snow event at that point, but we've had a thaw event. So do we have a thaw event policy? And are we trying to make the roads manageable? Because there were a couple of times last year where it became pretty darn hazardous, and then we really froze over it a number of intersections and such, so.
Well, I appreciate you mentioning intersections, I might put that on the side for a second, that is different. But in the residential streets, just a hairbit of explanation. So we don't treat any of our residential streets that are not a priority one. So what I mean by treat is we're not actually proactively going out and putting brine and salt down that nor reactively. So if it's icy or we start to get that snow floor built up, we're not going out and putting treatment methods to get the ice to go away. So it does, we end up with an ice floor that just keeps building and building and building, because historically, we've chosen not to brine throughout town. From a cost, but mainly an environmental concern and a vehicular concern, it's not really good for vehicles, right? Causes rust and all those things.
Neither are crashes.
Yes. So when we don't do that, the intent with this is to keep the, is to address in part the ice floor building up by servicing it more frequently so that that layer becomes less over the accumulation of the season. It will not eliminate unless we brine the results of us having a snow floor, and then it rains because it is an instant increase. It's almost like it instantly snows eight inches when it fluffs up or ten inches, right?
Right, and and I, I don't think, well, at least in my opinion and my very small amount of knowledge, so I'm gonna look over you, forgive me. But I don't think we need to eliminate a snow floor by using chemicals. I'm saying when the event happens, we need to treat it like we just got eight more inches of snow, even though it didn't come out of the sky. Because it just becomes another plow.
Agreed, and I think that you are a hundred percent correct. And we, I think, can continue, and one of the bullets here is to enhance our proactive monitoring of conditions and performance of operations. Meaning, we do monitor the weather, but we can always monitor the weather more and better. And so making sure that we are staffed appropriately in anticipation of an event that's gonna create that slush. So I think that's the best way we can be committed to responding when that event happens. It does take time, it takes us about eight, six to eight hours to plow all priority three streets. So when you're the street that's at the six to eight hour mark, it feels like crews aren't responding fast. The ones that were on the first four hours feel like you got to it really fast.
It's a moving rotation, so everybody gets to be first once.
And we've talked about that, actually.
It's a double-edged sword.
Is it?
Yeah. We have a night crew now, so we can monitor our ones and twos and some of the threes during the evening time at night. But then that lessens your manpower during the day. And generally, when you take and get rain, it's during the day. And like Amanda said, it happens like that. It's not something that the water sits on it and on the ice, and it stays there for a while and runs off and goes into the cat spaces. No, it fluffs up quick and you can't get to everything, as she said, right away. We don't have the manpower to do that because we, there's other people at home asleep.
Right. A couple other bullet points, just for the sake of time, I wanna make sure we try and get to other input that you have besides what's on here. So no parking either side is being proposed on some of our collectors. So these three streets that are listed pine, cedar, and larch are not arterials, but they are considered collectors at this point. And parking on both sides or even one side of them creates significant challenges. And then we put in question mark any others. So the point being here, we have a, you can park on one side of the street on the even side, but not on these streets. And that's really coming along from our discussions with emergency services, what we're hearing from the community, as well as our operators. Back to that picture where it's very difficult to get a plow through a fire truck, all of those things.
So I haven't looked at the map to know if it's what priority it is, but the short section of Michigan Street that's used to access the high school. That one seems to become kind of a nightmare with the width, because there's so much parking with the high school kids and the businesses and such there. So I I don't know where that sits in that list, but it.
That is a priority one.
That one is a priority one, okay.
That one is a priority one. Okay.
Everything from pine south to the highway is included. Most everything except for every Richland and Elliot, yes.
And then Lake Street is another one.
But you know what?
Well, Lake Street from Division to the highway is, but east is just not.
But you mean it's another one that's a parking problem and you're saying it's a parking problem too?
Yeah, it's just sometimes the cars are there, the snow is happening, that it, it gets pretty messy and it's it's high use because it's just the other entry for the school, so. And lots of kids walk the street there. And so there's all kinds of other stuff. Doesn't matter what time of the year it is.
The other one that comes up sometimes is Superior. Superior to the west of Boyer.
So.
You probably have a long list.
Yeah.
And the floor.
Okay. So y'all know I'm a UPS guy. And so this is near and dear to my heart. Now, this is not an indictment on our operators at all. I know our guys are, they're efficient, they're experts, they care about our city. This is more of an indictment on our citizens. Our citizens like to drive. They like to park on the street and they like to have many, many cars. We as citizens need to do a better job. If we as Sandpoint are going to commit that storm removal is a high priority. So we take ownership of our streets and our responsibilities for that to include enforcement, not encouragement, enforcement. So that we allow lanes of travel for our operators to go through uninhibited by obstacles for people that that forget which ones are even. As well as the only person that is concerned about hearing a snowplow or equipment late at night is the knucklehead that forgot to move their car. Everybody else, it is the, the sound of a, of a peaceful night of sleep because I know that the plows came through. I know that I moved my vehicle and I know that there's a driveway for me to shovel. So it, so I believe, I believe that this is a good plan. If not a great plan. It's very well thought out. I believe that these guys do a great job. It sounds like we've got plenty of equipment, plenty of material, plenty of budget. We as citizens need to do a better job, whether that's moving cars or coming together as a shovel brigade and helping sidewalks. The last little nugget of this that we're forgetting is, and you had brought up the rain, the snow on rain events and the freezing. We all know that those things happen, okay? And it freezes at night. It doesn't freeze in the day. Just, it just, it does. The, the challenge that say I have as somebody that is driving and delivering in these areas is that the, either people don't move their cars and that's people, as well as when we have clear non-snow event days where we got the equipment and we have the resources, we have the manpower, get our people out there and whether it's the crows to ticket and tow, or whether it's our operators to get out there and reclaim our streets aggressively like the snow and the ice are the enemy and we attack and get our streets. So I'm fairly confident that the, the survey is gonna, is gonna show more or less the things that I have said. I don't know if we need to go back and reinvent the wheel. I think that we need to continue to support these guys and gals. And it starts with us as a citizenry stating and saying and acting like storm removal is a priority. So resources as well as responsibility for your equipment, your car, your basketball boot, your garbage cans. Cause I doubt that. Like I know that these folks are saying that they know the rules. They don't know how to move their garbage cans. And they certainly don't know to move their cars and they certainly don't know what an odd and even, and this is, this is the other challenge. Our folks have to get to work. The, some businesses have enough parking for their employees. Not everybody does. Okay, that's, I totally understand that. That Lake Street is a prime example over by the old junior high. So that's, it's going to be a bummer that I know that these, these people that I know are gonna have, they're, they're gonna get grumpy. The other part of that is, there was, so you know, I'm a UPS guy and I was dad of three daughters that drove. Had three, four different vehicles that I had to figure out where I was going to put so I could have my driveway cleared. I was parking in my yard and I'm, I didn't get ticketed for it, but I, maybe I should have, maybe I could have. But I, I was responsible for my cars as a citizen to get them out of the roadway. Cause I live on one of those funky windy streets that are probably a challenge to plow on the best of times. And it's no parking signs on the odd side. So there's some challenges to these different neighborhoods that we have. So that's all I have to say about that for now.
I appreciate.
Thank you.
We can't park on our yards.
I park on my yard.
I thought you said you could have got ticketed for that.
No, I could have. Like, I didn't know if I could have or not. Like I was.
Your yard, bro.
There's a, there's a city ordinance says you're not supposed to drive over a curb bit.
We don't.
It's, there's no curbs.
Yeah, so, yeah, so.
I figured it out.
Yeah, we don't.
Yep.
Can I share some thoughts?
One, I, one element of perhaps selection bias with the survey, I think over seventy-six percent said that they drive with winter equipped vehicles in the winter and only like four or five percent said they walk in the winter. Seven, got your numbers. So there, there's one group of citizens that walks almost all the time in winter. I know because I'm the parent of one and that's schoolchildren. And we've talked a lot about streets and driveways, but we haven't talked much about sidewalks tonight. Talked about enforcement of parking, but we haven't talked about enforcement of, there was one bullet point, I think, about enforcement of people shoveling their sidewalks. We did talk about the idea, what would be the cost of the city plowing or shoveling or blowing every sidewalk in the city. I would emphasize, we work with the school district and we actually have our safe routes to schools coordinator here tonight who I invited because I think it's really important that we think about how our kids get to school. A lot of our kids are going to walk to school all winter long. So that number is far more than seven percent when we think about the elementary and middle school kids who don't have cars or who, whose parents have to go to work in the morning. Those kids are left to walk to school, which is often my daughter. And I mean, even in the four blocks, my daughter walks to Washington. There's, I, I, in my mind, I know exactly which neighbors never ever shovel the driveway and we walk out into the street in those cases where there's plows, where there's UPS drivers, where there's slippery roads. So really focusing on those safe routes to school and, and those priority pedestrian networks, I think if we're going to explore the city, maintaining sidewalks in the winter, I'd really emphasize what routes are those kids taking to school? And prioritize those. Cause it, that, that group of citizens overwhelmingly does still walk in the winter.
I think just for the sake of time, we have about seven minutes left. A hundred percent agree on the pedestrian side and that's where we placed that primarily is in the operations related component of this. And there was one key component that I wanted to mention is the adoption of our priority network was instrumental, I think, in helping to focus our community resource officers on enforcement. Enforcement is one piece. We've had a lot of conversations with Christine, our ADA coordinator, as well as the survey is supporting that there are challenges with some people being able to maintain those sidewalks. So we can give tickets out all day long and we can, you know, have a heavy hand, but there's more to that, having an effective passable sidewalk. And I think that that's really on the operations side where we understand that is a clear expectation. That's in part why we adopted that multimodal plan that has, like, we agreed at that time, council did, and it's in the plan. That this is where we need to focus on. So I think you're spot on and that coordination with our school district on it. So we're going to continue to progress that and, and come up with those various programs to assist in that overall comprehensive approach. I think the other piece is North Boyer Avenue is such a critical component of our accessibility for a large portion of our community that you're spot on, does walk majority of the year or uses a wheelchair. And so we've had significant amount of conversations. We've walked it, we've discussed different methods and we will be changing the way in which we plow and service North Boyer Avenue, particularly south of Baldi Avenue between, or not Baldi Avenue, Baldi Mountain Road and the highway to keep snow off of that sidewalk. It's been an ongoing maintenance challenge to keep it clear. And our operational side of things can help fix that. So kind of my point there is it's a clear priority. Right? That, that council's already communicated. Citizens have communicated it. That's our job to make sure we meet that expectation then. And so we'll be changing that. Or also to the point of what could we do at night, right? And enhancing that. It was great for us to get the feedback in the survey that says, you know what? We're okay with having all this equipment in our neighborhoods. And so we're going to take a more aggressive approach at night where we previously wouldn't feel comfortable being in those neighborhoods. And going back when it's not actively snowing and really trying to remove some of those berms that have built up and visibility at intersections. And one of the key components of the survey that we heard was we need to improve our intersections and make sure that they're addressed from a nice perspective. And so a more aggressive approach in those regards and our ADA ramps. So every time we have a conversation about our streets, it has a direct correlation to the sidewalks as well. So I appreciate your comments on that. And I think from a presentation perspective, just noting some super minor changes on our pathway, our lots, pathways and sidewalks portion of the policy. These were just clarifications of moving that ninth grade center sidewalk up into priority B. That's consistent with where it has been, meaning our actions have supported that. Our policy just was inaccurate in that regard. And then adding Mountain View to Popsicle Bridge. That's a new connection. So including that in the plan. And that's the end of the presentation. I will say at the beginning, I noted, you know, we typically for a city council type of workshop, depending upon time, we may or may not have, or we typically don't have the public, time for public comment. However, Mr. Mayor, if you felt that you wanted to engage in a council.
Yeah, I would welcome if, if there's any questions from members of the public that feel free to, yeah, please go ahead.
Sidewalk issue has been a pain in my side for years. Enforcement, enforcement, enforcement. Whether it be the sidewalk, whether it be the streets. I happen to live right by a van. The house right next door to me has typically had two cars parked down in front of it. They won't follow the rules and regulations of, of even odd or whatever it is. And where do they dump it? And the, and before going further, I think the city does a damn good job of using snow. Chuck, I want you to know that. But the problem comes into play when you try to put a gate down so that you're not burying those people's car and their driveway. Where does that snow go? Right in front of my house. So whether it be my house or anybody else in here don't follow those regulations. And there's no enforcement, somebody's going to suffer. It may not be you, but it could be someone else. So by making sure that those, those vehicles are moved and put in the right position. Toll, you know, it only takes a few times for people to get told before they, they get the picture. You're the city guy, you know, Cory's going to be inundated with phone calls. But that's part of the, any part of your job. You know, I'm outspoken, so there you go. And as far as the sidewalks, Jason, you spoke about the kids going to school. There's another form of the part of our community. Young kids deserve to walk on clean sidewalks, but there's elderly people, people with disabilities that they should be a better priority. Because if those people can't get to the grocery store, I won't mention the one that's on my list. If they can't get to the grocery store and it takes them a long time to get there, that grocery store is still going to have them get there and enjoy having them spend their money there. But let's make it safe. And I also believe in the ADA requirements of the city that's have over fifty employees. It's a city's responsibility to make sure those wheelchair ramps are kept clear. So I think enforcement is going to be the major key because if you get the streets cleaned, because if people have to move their cars, problem solved for the most part. Sidewalks, if it's enforced, if people get cleaner sidewalks, then that allows everybody to move on those sidewalks. And from that's, I mean, that's, that's pretty much it. It, it is uncomfortable. Nobody likes to have the law come down on them very much. I'm sure Cory could come up with people that really enjoy it, but they don't. I think that's something that's going to be a first step in trying to get that. You can make all the rules and regulations. It's a waste of time. It's a waste of your people's time. And it doesn't make Chuck's job any easier.
You had a question. Yeah, Amanda, real quick, she just brought up, go ahead. What was that?
I just said, yeah, we have a minute.
Thank you, the enforcer. So what's the timeframe? Somebody has to clear the sidewalk. Let's say the street, they're like, hey, they have time open. They're going to do it at, say, eight in the morning. This mom will be here, is homeschooling. She doesn't have the luxury of not having kids at home. So she can get it done at one o'clock. So you have this uneven schedule of plowing sidewalks. Is there something I've missed in the, like, you can come and give a ticket to, you know, like, oh, you're not plowing the sidewalk. Hey, I was going to get to it tonight.
I was, I was just going to say, I don't, I'd have to look it up and tell you.
Okay. I'm just, you know, that makes sense though. You might have this house that's on there. They don't have kids. They're not busy. Okay. Cool. Cause that'd be an interesting.
I would say with the enforcements.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What was that?
My recollection is it's ten AM.
You're hired.
One of the, one of the things that I would add, and I know we're out of time. So I'll make it quick with the enforcement side of it to answer some of the questions. You know, we have a really good weed policy in our city. And if you don't like take care of your weeds as a business, Angela, like, will have somebody mow your weeds and then we build a homeowner.
Okay.
And one of the things that we've talked about in storm removal, if we have these consistent residents or business owners that don't maintain their sidewalks, is that having someone on contract with the city that we get ahold of, they would go out, they would clean the sidewalk and then we would still bill them back to that property owner. So that's something that we've been doing with the weeds that I've talked internally about using that same, that concept in, in storm removal for sidewalks. So. And we're at seven o'clock.
No, you're fine. I was just gonna say it's seven o'clock and we're supposed to start.
Our resource officer a couple of years ago in regards to the property of the sidewalk. And it was over at that time that those, you know, those private property owners were responsible for it.
Yeah, no.
I think that's a good.
Thank you.
All right, we gotta wrap up here and.
Okay, we are now commencing with the regular city council meeting at seven oh five PM. All council members are now present as Joel Espiro joins us. Next, we'll proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting. Is there anyone in the public, anyone present, either online or in person, that would like to provide a public comment this more on a item that is either not on the agenda or an item on the consent calendar? I'm looking at you, John. Are you good? Okay. That concludes the public forum portion of our meeting. We'll now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is three hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty cents for regular payables. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion that the consent calendar be approved.
They'll move second.
They moved in second. This will be a real call vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Groot?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Consent calendar is approved. Now, under old business this evening, council will consider awarding the construction contract, contract for Sandpoint City Hall second floor remodel project. And now yield the floor to city administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a smit of a presentation on this item tonight because we did talk about it pretty extensively in the budget. I would note for council and the public that we did receive two bids in response to our RFP for construction services for the second floor remodel. And we were within budget with the lowest apparent bidder. And so that's before council tonight to award. And so that's before council tonight to award a contract for those services. And we would begin underway with remodeling this month with the hope of completion by mid spring. Where we have gotten public questions and comments is as we've gone through our series of remodels at City Hall, we've had the luxury of owning another city building, Community Hall, and been able to move staff over there. It has impacted community use of that facility. And we are reassessing what our impact will need to be with staff with this reconstruction. Right now, we have all of our staff moved out of the second floor that would be remodeled. However, we're also hiring for several positions and we are at full capacity with the rest of City Hall. So we likely will need to have some impact over at Community Hall. But if we're able to maintain that to a smaller area and open it a large room again, that's something we'll be assessing over the next couple of weeks.
Okay, great. And I just want to affirm, and maybe Amanda, you can speak to this and or Jennifer, that the city overall was happy with Meridian's performance with our last contract.
Yeah, actually, this particular, most of our construction projects, Amanda's managing them. City Hall actually has been remodel has been myself with Cheryl helping him out with that. So yeah, Meridian has provided us, has been our lowest bidder for phase one, which was first floor City Hall as well as the police rock remodel most recently completed. And again, is apparent lowest bidder and they've provided us good services throughout all of the phases of construction. And we'll have carryover of this police remodel because we don't have the generator yet installed. That's due to delays. So we'll actually be finishing up some of the work with the police remodel in addition to this third phase, third and final phase, I would note.
Great, thank you. Does council have any questions? All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution for award of the construction contract for City Hall second floor remodel project. Is there a motion? Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? This will be a real call vote.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Growth.
Yes.
Motion passes. The final item on the agenda this evening, council will consider renewal of employee benefits contracts. I will now yield the floor once again to city administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one will also be a pretty quick presentation tonight. We are requesting council approval of our benefit plans for city employees. Our elected officials are also treated as city employees and covered through our programs. This would be a renewal of all of our existing benefit programs. The only changes that we would have in the program is the deductible on our HSA plan, which is one of three medical plans we offer to our employees increases from twenty eight hundred to three thousand per calendar year. The deductibles established by the IRS, so that's not something that we are able to negotiate in our benefits renewal. But along with that, in this proposal before city council, we are requesting to increase the employer contribution to the employee HSA plans from twelve fifty to fifteen hundred dollars a year. So when we adopted the methodology and had the three plans, the amount that the city was contributing to the high deductible plans for employees was the difference between the deductible amount of the high deductible plans and our traditional offering of our program or of our medical program. So not the buy up option, but our regular medical options. So the city was contributing the difference again between that deductible and the HSA. So for plan year twenty twenty three, our deductible on our traditional medical plan is fifteen hundred dollars a year with the HSA increasing to three thousand per year. The city contribution would be fifteen hundred dollars. The reason for that, again, when we added the HSA option and the buy up option, our three different medical plans was HSA plan reduces insurance out of pocket on the front end and it helped with stabilizing our rates and the rate increases that we were receiving year over year. Since we've implemented our three different medical options and had employees choosing what works for them across the three different options, actually adding the HSA plan has significantly helped with stabilizing our rates, which last year our rate renewal was actually a reduction in our premiums. This year with a premium in increase of four percent were significantly lower than what you're seeing with the industry standard. Again, this is based on our utilization, but the HSA is helping balance that out. And then we added the buy up plan for employees who wanted lower deductible option. They pay the difference in the premium between the the traditional medical plan and the buy up plan because they want the higher level of coverage than is our standard offering through the city. Finally, the other change in our plan is just the pooling, how they pool payment and determine really renewals for future years. So they are moving us into a hundred thousand dollar pooling from a seventy five thousand dollar, which really doesn't make any difference to our employees and the level of coverage that they are receiving. The refund endorsement that we negotiated in last year's Regent's medical contract, that's where if the premiums, if there is an overage in premiums paid as opposed to medical expenses paid out, that difference is shared back between regions and the city with a split of fifty fifty, which is not typical of a medical plan offering for employers. But we've been able to negotiate that in our Regent's policy. So again, very few changes. Our only increase in terms of cost is with our renewal for medical at the four percent. Our renewals for our EAP, for our long term disability, for our dental coverage, for our life insurance plan, there is no change. And in fact, on our life, our long term insurance, our vision insurance and our EAP program, we had a two year rate guarantee. So we will not see any changes in those premiums for at least two years.
Thank you. Council have any questions? All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of renewal contracts with Blue Shield, Regent's Blue Shield of Idaho, Delta Dental of Idaho, Life Map and Rain and Associates. Is there a motion? Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? This will be a real call vote.
Counselor Spurrow.
Yes.
Counselor Growth.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Motion passes and with no further business this evening, this meeting is adjourned at seven fifteen. Thank you, everyone.